All right.
But I mean, it misses.
Uh, notice is here by given that the regular meeting of the city council for the city of Palm Valley will be now held at uh, I don't know, I'm reading the whole thing just to be, I don't miss anything. On the fifteenth day of February at six P M, Palm Valley City Hall, thirteen thirteen North Stewart Place Road. Uh, Palm Valley meetings are available to all persons regardless of disability and um, call to order. Uh, invocation, Kathy?
Dear Holy Father, you for this day that you allowed us to see God, thank you for collectively blessing us. God, as we continue to do your will, God, let us love one another here with clear ears and love with a pure heart. God, let the decisions be made be the best interest of the city in Jesus's name, we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and ever changing for all.
All right, I forgot to do this last time, but under uh, section state law, conflict of interest exists if a council member or certain members of that person's family, business organizations, which the council members serve as an employee officer, director, trustee, or partner, or and any person or organization with whom you are negotiating or or have any arrangement concerning prospective employment as a qualifying financial interest in an agenda item, members with a conflict of interest cannot participate in discussion or vote on the agenda item.
May I pretend my notice, uh, city secretary knows there is a uh, public speaking. Did we just admit that?
It's on three, is, I mean, it's on the time of five.
Oh, I didn't say. Thank you. That's uh, no problem, I mean, well.
You want to borrow my coins?
I only got the number three so far, I'm a little slow.
We're here there. Very good for that motion to adjourn.
Our discussion and possible action to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of January seventeen twenty twenty-three. I was going through and it's very detailed, you have it here on the sign.
I know, you're impressive.
Yes.
They look good to me, I'm willing to make a motion if nobody has any issues. I make a motion to accept the um, minutes of regular meeting, January seventeen twenty twenty-three.
I I second that mo- motion.
Uh, anybody opposed? Anybody? Let's take a vote, I'm sorry.
You're doing good.
All those in favor?
All those in favor?
I.
All those opposed? Motion carries that the minutes discussion and action to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of January seventeen twenty twenty-three has passed. Ms. Kathy Cherry, is there any further comments?
There's no public comments at this time.
Anybody online? All right. It's gonna be a record meeting, it's a discussion and possible action to approve an ordinance calling and ordering the general election on May sixth twenty twenty-three for the purpose of electing one mayor and two council members, one for each place three and place five. Anybody have any?
Is it comments on it? Are the only items on on that ballot would just be the ones for for Palm Valley?
Yes.
Right, if it, a- any other thing, you you need to go some other place to vote.
That's correct. Any other? I, discussion?
Yeah.
No?
I I I move that we uh, that we approve an ordinance calling and ordering a general election on May sixth tw- twenty twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three for the purpose of electing one mayor and two council members, one for place three and one for place five.
All that.
Oh, I second it.
Okay.
All in favor?
I.
I. All opposed? It's okay, it's. Item number seven. Discussion and possible action to terminate Redfish recycling contract and providing zero days written notice to cancel the contract.
What changed?
The owner, well, so we sat down with the owner, uh, was it last week, Kathy? Yes, and she's sending out the notes on that too, um. He came in here and he said, you don't have to give us ninety days, you can just terminate now if you want to, he goes, you can terminate as a matter of fact, if you want to write this moment, I said, well, we'll do it at city council, we'll terminate. Uh, one of the things that he did want to, I guess it'll be in item number eight, but then he was okay with us terminating right away. And he he didn't agree with the trash cans either, he went out and looked at them and he said that uh, he was sorry for them being out there because they looked very ugly to him.
And just, just for your information, they're kind of moving toward individual recycling.
Okay.
And we're gonna allow them to go house to house and if we can get a hundred, we're gonna do it, and it's fifteen dollars a month, twice a month.
Well, oh, yeah, he was saying two hundred, so, well, that's on the next side, next agenda.
So uh, so uh. Is there a motion to terminate Redfish recycling?
Yes, I think that we terminate Redfish recycling.
Second. All approved?
I.
All opposed? Motion carries to possi- uh, to terminate Redfish recycling contract and providing zero days written notice. Item number eight, discussion only, a subscription-based recycling service with Redfish to the citizens of Palm Valley. With that note, the owner of Redfish came in here and he discussed options for him, he he said it would be more beneficial for him if he, if we did a subscription-based curbside pickup in the city. He did mention that he wanted about two hundred people, but he's okay with, what was it, a hundred, a hundred? He was okay with a hundred at fifteen dollars a month and they would give us one month free. And he says, maybe we can encourage your citizens of the city says, well, you know, in order to pitch in and get everybody involved, maybe we can take five dollars off their first month or first or second month bill and the city just uh, pays that amount. Um, it would be twice a week if we get one hundred people. I'm sorry, twice a month, if we get one hundred people, so they'd um, they'd come with a, it's it's a smaller truck and it it looks like a UPS truck, she said. And then if we get way more than that, if we're into the three, four hundred, they'll, they're willing to bring the price down to ten dollars and come every, once a week. It's more beneficial to them, they they, he he saw the the bins out there and he was, he he kept apologizing the whole time. Yeah, he's like, he goes, it just, we shouldn't have done that, so.
Could this be something where we would uh, come back if if they gets it over and then have um, city council approve them in essence, operating recycling services in the city?
Well, I wouldn't know how that works, uh, how would you recommend it?
Give them authority to, like.
Yes.
Get the form with the, to the army services.
Yes, and uh, so they're gonna do all the marketing for us and, cause I told them that we couldn't as a city get involved in trying to promote them. But uh, we did say that we would send out a questionnaire to the citizens and say uh, ask them a few questions, how willing they would want to participate in recycling and then uh, then we'd get our number from there, but.
You know, I have um, a suggestion, if we're gonna give any kind of discount, maybe have a deadline cause people think like, oh, yeah, that's a great idea, but they'll forget about it, they'll get busy. But if you have a deadline, a certain date, everybody, if you sign up by this day, then the city will give it, help pay to do a discount or something.
I'm I'm gonna, I'm gonna do that with my next phone call to you when I leave a voicemail, I'm gonna put a deadline on the return.
See, see, that's what I'm, deadlines are important, I'm the worst.
Hey, uh. Anyway, um, is it a, a similar sized container?
It's a similar sized container and here's where we're gonna run into a problem because.
Color is it?
It is.
Red, it's not blue.
It's not blue, it is a dark burgundy color and it has a bright yellow lid.
Oh, like she, yeah, okay.
But he is not going to change that because they have that throughout and that's, that is, those are their colors and that's what they're gonna provide.
Yeah.
Um, so those are the numbers, he did say that uh, right now Rancho Viejo is doing all the um, the workup like we're doing right now and they're gonna get started pretty soon and Los Fresnos has entered into a similar contract that you just discussed, Jason.
Okay.
And they're gonna do, they're gonna be doing the same thing too.
Okay, I can put in language.
Well, let's just automatically.
They're gonna make sure that their customers keep those bins out of sight.
Yes, yes, and 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 so um.
How do they market it, how do they?
They're gonna go, so they're gonna go door to door and they're gonna put door knockers, they're gonna try to engage people.
All right.
Uh, they want us, um, if we have something or post it somewhere, maybe our newsletter, um, we do have it on, we do have a Facebook now. So in case you guys wanna put anything on there, just uh, let Jose know, most of the time Jose's not here, but we need to make sure that.
He drags in every day.
We need to publicize that Facebook account anyhow.
Yeah, he's been, he's been doing it every single day, he's been putting it on Nextdoor and uh, we put it on our website.
Letter that would be good, that we can add this recycling to at the same time.
And so it said, it's uh, gonna take a little bit, cause they they want it done as, as fast as possible, but but they have to be involved in the marketing, I told them, they're gonna have to go door to door and they were, they were willing to put up boots in the city to, uh, we have something going on, yeah, so, yeah. Yes, oh, and there, once they take the bins, they're gonna put a sign there with a Q R code and so when you hit the Q R code, it's automatically gonna take you to their application process and then you can start filling it out. Yeah.
It's up. It's different days of the week for that.
They can make it the same day as us, so the same Wednesday, they can come in on Wednesday and do it the same day.
So I have ugly trash cans one day.
Yes, we'll have ugly trash cans one.
Okay.
I didn't even wanna bring that up, but I, yeah. But I was like, oh, we gotta bring up the color of it, yes, there'll be a dark burgundy with a big yellow lid on it, yeah.
Um, that kinda reddish.
Yeah, reddish, yeah.
Maroon. Liquid white maroon, what she was wearing, remember?
Oh.
Remember, she had that.
That was red.
It was glow in the dark.
Yeah, and I don't know if you knew that how the blue cans came about, well, you know, right?
No.
The blue cans came about because once we terminated that contract um, in December, waste management wanted outright immediately and so Waste Connections was trying to get cans to us and uh, they had to order them from their headquarters and they sent them the blue cause they didn't have enough to come in on January with the other trash cans.
Oh.
Yeah, so.
They're gonna send us some paint or what?
Um, if you, you can ask individually and they'll bring a dark blue can.
Oh, I've seen that, I've seen that.
So you can call and ask individually and say, hey, look, my trash can.
Uh, you, like a blue, like your, your shirt?
Yes, this color, yeah, okay, yeah.
Yeah, that's a little more palette.
So, that was.
Well, you know.
Got my name on it.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I put a leash on it. Yeah.
Anyway, uh, any other discussion on that? All right, that's good. Uh, item number nine is discussion only at the city of Palm Valley hosting the Tri-City Classic five K, ten K run to be held in Palm Valley on April twenty-nine, twenty twenty-three. Um, last year, three cities held a run and it was hosted by Primera. And so they reached out to Combs this year and Combs says, we can't do it this year, we'll do it next year. So then they called us and says, well, it's your responsibility this year, they didn't say it like with a hammer to my head or anything, but they were like really adamant that they wanted us to host it, so I said, uh, yes, but I have to bring it up to the council, uh, we, it'll be starting here and ending here and it'll be uh, the one, it'll be a one mile fun run around, I think the chief has the mi- the mile already. And then uh, there'll be a five K, the five K is exactly one circle around Palm Valley. And then the ten K, uh, one city is always, one city is always gonna get excluded, so Combs is getting excluded on this one.
All right.
And so they're gonna go uh, they're gonna cut across through Tangerine, go down Wilson.
Go to Will Cox, Will Cox.
And go to Primera Road and then back to Stewart, then go to the city hall, then come all the way back down Stewart Boulevard to the second entrance and then come back and finish off there.
Well, Primera should be in, in it every year or something like that.
Yes.
They're the center point, right?
Yes, and so um.
One year, one out of three or not.
How many?
They gave us all the forms, so Combs and Primera, and I need to get this in writing, this, we're still talking about it. But uh, they have, they said that they would provide their police department and their public works guys and whatever, whatever we need. But uh, we need to get it in writing that that's when it provide, cause I don't wanna come the, the last day and then no one shows up, so I'm gonna make sure that they, they provide that for us.
Um, we, we wanna make sure we have uh, PD involved, obviously.
Yes, we're uh, we're having a meeting, uh, I think I let Scott Nelson know too, we're having a meeting this Friday at six o'clock here at the city hall to uh, just get everything started as to who the vendors are, getting T-shirts, medals, uh, the banners, I spoke to a vendor today about banners, but you know, we gotta do our due diligence and get some other people, see how, what they cost. Last year, the city of Primera raised eleven thousand two hundred dollars on the race and they spent five thousand six hundred and ninety-six dollars and fifty-two cents and they made a profit of nine thousand one hundred and eighty-three dollars and forty-eight cents. Yeah, and that was with a hundred and twenty, no, a hundred and fifty runners, they're anticipating since that was the first annual and that wasn't promoted as 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 they wish they had, they're thinking that this run is probably gonna have maybe a hundred and eighty runners.
Really?
Yes.
Yeah.
And there are, are um, where's that, where's the revenue coming from, right, there, there's, there's.
Increase fee, entry fee and sponsors, yeah, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna get Kathy and Jose, since Jose doesn't do a lot and we're gonna go out there and talk to businesses to see if we can uh.
And then we'll make banners for them.
Yes, yes.
I noticed um, in twenty, I had about twelve questions here because I did a council meeting in eighteen minutes, so I was gonna make sure.
This is nineteen.
Right, so I, so I crossed, I crossed out about nine of them, but but it said city of Primera, the check for written too, so are.
Yeah, we're changing, we're changing all that, we're changing the, if you, in the packet, you'll see that it has it, we're changing the logo to that, we're changing all, everything's gonna be Palm Valley.
But we're gonna get the money then, right?
Yes, yes.
So are we gonna segregate that?
Yes, Kathy's, if you wanna explain it to them already, that's, if, if you wanna explain it to them.
Oh, yeah, so everything is gonna be changed over to where our line items will reflect everything to Palm Valley and not Primera, so we'll have those line item and budget items adjusted to where it'll strictly come with us.
Is, is uh, one year we get the revenue and the other two years that goes.
They, it goes to them.
Just goes around up?
Yes.
Just like that?
Yeah, so.
That's the simplest way.
Primera made the revenue last year.
Yeah.
We're gonna make it this year and then next year is gonna go to Combs.
All right.
Yeah.
I like that, I like cooperating with other cities, now, what if, what about, okay, so where will they sign up? Or where will they congregate and where will they go to bathroom?
Well. Let me put this delicately.
Thank, thank.
Yeah, we're gonna have porta potties, everything, um, we're gonna start off over there on the other side of uh, on the Palm Valley West.
Okay.
And we're gonna have to close some of those streets off of there.
Like right around the uh, club, right there and stuff, okay, so there's a starting point.
I did reach out to the club to uh, see if we can use those two parking lots that are closer to the street so we could put all our boots and everything there and all the sponsors so they, everybody could see them. But we never received the response, I reached out to them last week, they haven't responded back. And so uh, other than that, we can use the, we can use the center median for the, for the boots as well, so, I mean, it it, it's not required, but it it would help out and if it doesn't, we can figure out another way.
So sponsors have this, like with water or what?
Uh, no, they just push out their material, like.
Uh, like State Farm would.
Will come in there and say, hey, you wanna get insurance with the, I think the last year, the biggest sponsors were uh, two political candidates, uh, Orange Theory, what, Orange Theory?
That, that was.
Yeah.
Is Prime gonna give us the list from twenty twenty-two, cause that's the ones that, you know, if they're happy. They're easy sign up.
They are, she, she, Kathy, we just talked to Selena, uh.
Who's today, well, yeah, uh, yes, Gonzalez today and she's gonna give us everything from last year so we can kind of piggyback and adjust it to, to where it goes to the city of Palm Valley.
Don't wait till the last minute.
No, it's already, all the wheels, all the wheels are already in progress, uh, we have, as soon as I got approval for you guys to get this going, uh, we're setting up account with active.com, I don't know who runs here, I know I run a lot.
I wish I did.
So if you go on active.com, it's a nationwide website and what they do is you go on there and you give them your form, you fill out all the information on there and uh, the ten K is twenty-five dollars and the five K is twenty dollars and so they add an extra three dollars and twenty-five cents or something like that and that's their processing fee.
Uh, it says discussion only, we don't need to vote on it, yes?
Yeah, no, no, we don't, we don't need to vote on it, I just wanted to bring it up to you guys, it was okay, this kinda, I guess we can vote on it if you want.
Well, I'm just curious.
Yeah.
I, I, yeah.
No, it's discussion.
Discussion only, yeah. Good, but uh. Okay. But uh, I just wanted to let you guys know before we, we're starting to contact people and uh, so that active.com does everything for you, uh, footworks in Harlingen, they're a big running shoe place and they do, they do all the bibs and everything, so you, it, once you sign up, they'll be, you'll be going up there and you'll get your timing chip and you're big with them and everything will be done and we'll also have forms here in the city for the old school people like Eric that still have to have paper. You can fill it out here and you can avoid the three dollar charge that they're gonna.
Well, you get, you want to say.
Yeah. No, you can't. And uh, anyway, all the forms, all the forms are there. Uh, this was brought to me by the commissioners in Palm, uh, Primera because they, they really wanted to, they, they wanted to get this, keep it going and they didn't wanna skip a year, so.
I'll, I'll, I'll talk to, I'll talk to the club tomorrow, yes, and I'm gonna get a reply over.
And so, yeah, and we're not, uh, we're gonna have some porta potties out there, we're not gonna, we weren't gonna use the building, we just wanted those two parking lots, but it doesn't make a difference if it's gone or not.
How long do you want the two parking lots? When's, when's it starting?
Well, it starts at seven, so we'd have to be, we'd have to set up around five A M. Uh, the race starts at seven, the, probably the slowest runner, who'll probably come in in about two hours. That's a really slow runner, probably, yeah, it'll be two hours, so that's what, nine, ten, eleven? And then an hour, yeah, yeah, yeah.
How many participants, did you already say that?
They had one hundred and fifty last year and they're expecting all races, yes, and uh, they're gonna, they're expecting about a hundred and eighty, they're expecting quite a few more.
Okay. Well, the sponsorship has gotta be jumped on fast.
Yeah. And so they're already working on sponsors too, they're also contacting sponsors. You can see it on here. The sponsorship package, if you're a platinum sponsor, it's fifteen hundred dollars, you get a race sponsor booth priority logo on the website, race day announcements and product placement in a goodie bag. The gold sponsor is one thousand, logo on the website, race day announcement, booth priority, placement in a goodie bag, silver sponsors are five hundred, logo on the website, race day announcements and the bronze sponsors at two fifties, race day announcements.
Are you already signed up?
I can't, yeah, it's un, it's unacted, so I, I will, I, I probably will run it, I, I like running, so.
You're gonna have to trip if you're in.
So if we wanna help, if we wanna. And we wanna help, then we show up Friday, this Friday.
Yes, it's gonna be right here at six o'clock, uh, Scott's gonna be here, right, he's trying to make it, uh, anybody in this room is welcome to come at six o'clock, uh, and we're gonna discuss everything that we have to get going and stuff like that, so. It's open to anybody, it's not, uh, I just happened to reach out to Scott, cause uh, wh- why did I reach out to you, I don't, I can't remember.
Clearly I'm running.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, very evidence, yeah.
Yeah.
Just like me.
So. Okay, yeah, that's right, yes. Well, with, no, I think I just reached out to you, cause. Yeah, we had just talked, I think that's what it was, yeah, but anyway, anybody's welcome, they can stop by here and uh, we have some people that are runners that have done this race before and there's, there's companies and people that have already uh, put runs together and so forth, so.
So do they go through the whole Palm Valley three miles?
The five K does.
The five K does.
Yeah.
Five K does, ten K does, five K outside.
And we're gonna need about eighty volunteers. Eighty, yeah, but it's not all incumbent on us because we have three cities working with us too, so, yeah, okay.
Yeah, people heading out the water.
Heading out the water, saying like, go that way.
Yeah, go that way and we'll uh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions on this? And I think we're coming up on the last item. Uh, item number ten, consent agenda, chief, do you have anything? Uh. Julie? Yes.
First off, does everyone have a budget?
Yes. Yeah, we have it in our packet.
Um, since it's my first time up here, I'm gonna kind of go through the um, there was an vote, an ordinance, August of two thousand fifteen, that set the parameters for how the parks and recs off operates. So our purpose is to provide a vehicle to the citizens and to the council um, to maintain and improve the quality of life in Palm Valley and as structured process to receive these ideas and to see where needs lie. The way that the Parks Board is structured is there will be seven members on the Parks Board. Um, they will be a uh, a person appointed by the city council, serving three years. There will be two officers, a chairman and a vice chair. And again, serving as an advisory supportive committee for whatever is priorities for you as the commissioners or with citizens have mentioned. Um, and I'm gonna touch upon some of the things that um, I had sent y'all an email about after last meeting. So when here, there's been some talk of having like a treasurer and so you know, that, you know, can be done in general, when you're looking at your budget, there is a board member that is chairing each event and they'll have a backup person, so they are responsible for following the budget to a T and anything that is not within the budget that comes up, then that needs to come back, you know, before you, so that's in general, as far as the treasurer, our chair has gotten with the city secretary to be sure that our spreadsheet is always updated and available to you. Um. And as far as meetings, you know, we follow the Texas Open Meeting Act, run our meeting very much like, like you do. Um, as far as the rules and regulations, um, it, it's inherited, said that um, the advisory board will make their own rules and regulations for the meeting and they're responsible for carrying out any of the provisions. Um, and we shall advise the council and it says from time to time.
Yeah, we're, so we're um, we're getting with Jason to rewrite the whole thing, just so everything is concise and all the, uh, every item is checked off, so there's no misunderstanding ever, like, all right, these are what we're following, so Jason is going through the ordinance right now.
Well, and that's where, so I know that you're going through, but I'm just kind of sharing you kind of, you know, um, pardon me? Yeah, yes.
Okay.
So, and the ordinance that we've been following.
Okay.
So with it, um, you know, advise as far as um, time to time as needed. So we present a budget, you know, before y'all actually do the fiscal year's budget and whatever you approve, we try to stay right within that if more is needed. And whatever you approve, we try to stay right within that. If more is needed, then we raise that extra money. Um, and as far as the ordinance goes now, um. You know, best efforts to secure, you know, support of incorporation with civic clubs. And conduct city beautification and recreation programs. And provide an annual report to you. So that is the ordinance that we've been following. And we're happy to come and speak. And present reports to you. We've just kind of operated with our approved budget. You know, welcoming any comments, but not coming before you all the time as far as. We know that you're busy. You've approved a budget. We're executing. Um. So it's not a problem to come every month. And give a report. And it also gives you an opportunity that if. You're, you're seeing something or if there are citizens in the community that are making comments, like. You know, getting the blue trash cans put away out of eyesight. Um.
There's that blue again.
Well, and, and I. Well, and, and an example of ways that we've tried to really support you as council members. There was a time when we were looking at, at maximizing property at. Tobogan Via in Palm Valley Drive West. And so we actually did a survey, a questionnaire and had, you know, it was all kind of options, you know, butterfly park, you know, the. All kinds of stuff. And. You know, the council had some great ideas and people were really into doing something. But the survey conducted revealed like, just leave it alone. There was not enough unanimous agreement. There were parking issues. So that's where, that's something we've done in the past to be really supportive and helpful. To provide you information for what citizens want. We're happy to do that. Um, the Veterans Park has probably been like. You know, one of the most rewarding things that we've done. Um, you know, and then focusing on beautification, like lighting at the entrance, as well as hosting events to engage people. Um. So on the budget, the budget is updated. With every single meeting. And so in here, as you look at the budget, you're gonna see a list of events, the dates. Who's the chair? Who's the vice chair for them? And we actually give a very detailed list of. You know, for example, lighting of the palms, you know, we needed thirty chairs for sixty dollars. So when I called Renta World and they said. Thirty chairs is whatever, you know, ninety dollars. I was like, I need other chairs. They're like, oh, yes, we have some that are not as expensive. I was like, great. So it lets us execute events very well. So that's where. In discussions, we've talked about accountability. And so that's where I was wanting some feedback to you, from you on, how can we be more. Accountable and present information to you.
I, I think Kathy had a great idea and that's why you're here today. She came up with putting you guys on the consent agenda. Because that was, you know, that way everyone knows. What's going on with the parks and rec and it's not like, oh, something happened two or three months. So thank you, Kathy, for doing that. But I think it's, it's great that you guys are up here now and now we're good to see you.
Well, and, and it's this as far as financial accountability and, and we truly, all funds are deposited with the city. And all money that is spent is approved either pre-approved on the budget or. Again, we've made a plan before, like with collecting money and then every check is written. And if someone, um, I added a column to this so we could see if. You know, when someone's chairing something, they may actually go purchase something that they're. You know, is part needed for the event, but they're gifting it to the city. So I put things like that in. So like for the Veterans Day event, Shane actually purchased the chairs.
I know I tried to give him the money, but he wouldn't take it.
Okay, exactly.
Yeah.
And um. And then uh one of the things, and this was good going over with Kathy, because we're all kind of learning a new system. Was we realized that some funds had been collected in the last fiscal year. And we found that we had one sponsorship that we had not received the checks. So, so we're following up. But if you go to page three of the budget. You will see. Like the, the pink um or above the, where it's pink above that, eight thousand is our budget. And then I actually, this is what we've already spent and I did include the microphone system. Um. And I know that you said the city can pay for that, but I've left it in there. It's like, hopefully we can cover that for you.
Uh, I, I, I don't think we should, I don't think you should though, because you know, we use it for the city as well. So I don't think you should carry that.
Okay, okay. Then, then yay, then I'm only a hundred and five dollars in the hole.
Okay.
Um, so the next number, so you see the eight thousand, the seventy three hundred is what we've spent. So that means we have six hundred and thirty one dollars left over, but we did raise money. So. The sixteen hundred is, is, are the expenses that were not budgeted. And then um the five thousand is what we collected. And uh we're.
Other, the other check is.
It is coming.
I, I don't know if you've ever heard this, but I've been investing so long time, it's in the mail.
Yeah.
Not, no, and surely I can go and pick it up. And again, in reconciling, I didn't realize that check had not come in yet. So that was good to sit down with Kathy and we came up with that. So um. There's like, you know, pink, green and blue numbers. So, you know, we need thirty four hundred for our budget moving forward for the events we have not. Executed. Um. You know, budget minus expenses. So I was kind of like, whoops, all right. So we one thousand, you know, eleven hundred dollars. Over budget for the year, but again, if you're doing the system, that's a thousand there. So we are right on track. Um. So, yeah, so um. So that was one of the things, talking about accountability and transparency with the money, just to let you know that. This budget is updated every single meeting. Anything that is above this, like this year for the lighting of the palms. There is quite a bit of work that needed to be done with replacing trees from the freeze. Um, on the island, and so raising extra funds to cover those things, to keep the island looking nice.
Since you're on the uh, on the agenda every month, you're wel, you guys are welcome to speak, obviously.
Yeah, thanks. If I may, I just want to add one thing. So we don't meet every month. I mean, we're, we need kind of as needed. So you're not. Some months will be like, yeah, we're here, we'll change. And that's kind of as far as we'll probably go.
The chief just did now.
Yeah, exactly. He sets the precedent for us. All of that.
And naturally, when I looked back from like two thousand nineteen.
Yeah.
So we've generally met about four or five times a year because our events will kind of cluster together.
That's fine.
Um.
You're welcome.
But, but, but this is always available and updated.
I mean, if they have a monthly budget, they could, you know, plug it in, they could send Jen and if there's something specific with the requesting action, then you can move it up. And then that would be the name in like.
That's okay.
Well, and that's where, and um, I'm gonna, please give me some more time. I appreciate it. So with it too, as far as the way that we've brought people on the board, so right now we have two open positions and a possible third. Is, you know, um. Let it, letting it be known in the loose newsletter, getting applications in. Um, which is one we, we started with our last person that came on board, Melissa Tice. So we had three to review. We have open positions. And we talked about pulling the two apps that had, we had in the past that. Didn't see if they're still interested in serving. We've got someone else who would like to serve on, on the committee, have them, them turn in an app. So that's part of, I know that you're looking at redoing the ordinance. And I've got, and, and again, coming to the meeting and reporting is no problem, but just an FY, we have an ordinance we're following. And I know that you're wanting to make changes.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you know. But we're, we're accountable to follow this unless y'all are kind of all in consensus of saying, you know, yes. Make these changes for the nine items that were discussed.
We're probably gonna bring it up at the, at what's probably gonna come in the next council meeting where um, and it's, I, I talked to Jason today. It's not just your ordinance. There's a bunch of ordinance that need updating and stuff like that. So um. So right now we're just kind of like on a hold to see what we can do with the ordinance and.
So present business as usual, so seven members.
And we're pretty much.
It is.
I would take this off until we rewrite the ordinance before we.
Right. So you're not wanting to fill any positions at this time and you're gonna come up with a new system. It's more than.
Yes.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't have a problem with seven.
And, and there were also items mentioned as far as. Someone using influence and altercation, altercation like at, at the Harlingen Country Club. And there was issues with this building being entered into after hours. And I will give you an example of, none of us have keys. It's always talking, talking to the police. So like after the lighting of the palms, I was here Saturday morning. Fluffing, getting the trailer decorated and I maximized this large space to do it, decorated the trailer. Came back the next day. And took everything off the trailer, laid it out in here and actually did inventory because it was easier to see, like take pictures and make a list. Packing it away, showing it how I packed it away. And then I tried to be sure I was like. Cleaned out your table, cleaned out your chairs, swept, mopped. Because there was glitter and green. So that's where. There were time, I mean, when an event is going on, there are times when it's nice to have a large space that most of us don't have in our homes. So just kind of FY. And again, if there is any. Anything you hear as far as an altercation, those things should be brought to the attention immediately. And addressed. I mean, that is a. That is not, you know, something that we're, we're here to cooperate with the community. Are there, um, so when in the meeting, there wasn't a lot of talk on as far as. As far as vision, mission goals, what are we doing for you that's working well? What are things that you're kind of like, we don't know that that's really serving the community well? Are there things that you want us to focus on?
I think the events that we have now are, are great. I don't have a problem with any of the events at all. Um, I would like a little bit more on the beautification part. I think I was talking to Chendo. There's some areas that belong to the city. And maybe have like a community cleanup, like, hey, get everybody involved and. Uh, we'll provide the, the flowers and whatever it is that needs to be put out there. Cause I think there's what, about three or four sections in the city? They're just kind of like overgrown weeds and stuff like that. Yeah.
Well, and, and.
Gonna beautify the city that way.
Well, and that's where so like, I mean. Again, if you're driving by something and see something or someone makes a complaint, you know, take a picture, send it to us. We'll get it on the agenda. And address those things. I mean, that's why we're here is to serve you. And I want to make sure that we're serving you well. But if there's not communication, then we are doing our thing. Within our budget that we've already planned and discussed and y'all are disappointed and we're not meeting your needs. So.
Well, that's why I think it's great to come to the meetings. Like I did not know that y'all did the little Christmas and patriotic banners on the light. And, and so also coming to the meetings, I mean, then it, then it's on our website and. You know, then the public knows more and, and you know, maybe you would have more involvement or more ideas.
I think that and uh also maybe like uh. And, and the reason I bring this up to, and I, it just came up into my head concerning what we can do. Um, there was a thing that we put on our social webs, uh, social media uh concerning um. Uh, a health event that's going on in these three cities. And um. And this prior to anybody in here, I guess they came in here and uh they tried to get the city involved and they're, they're just kind of shoot away. I'm not gonna say who. But uh. Um. Maybe having some sort of, I don't know that falls in your purview or not. That's, I mean.
I think we can talk about that. That's certainly, I mean, it's, it's in the public interest and it's, it's a recreational event.
Yeah.
And, and we've actually did a triathlon in the past for children.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so I think that's, yeah, and if that stuff comes up, let us know if you're interested in pursuing it. Um. We probably, among us, we know the people and you guys will know some of those folks as well that can help us organize that.
Yeah, because I think they're having like help um. Classes and fitness classes over there. We just kind of missed the boat on that one. So.
Well.
I thought we would.
And I said that, and, and that's where again, so we've got ordinance that we're currently following until y'all vote on something else.
Okay.
Um, but we're willing to, you know, the things that you want us to come and speak or report on, happy to do it. Uh.
I think the only concern that I would have for that is you may not get the same person every meeting.
That's okay.
Yeah.
Like originally she was gonna be out of town for the next. Meeting. So I text her to them like, hey, am I going? Are you going? So you get one of us at the very least.
Perfect.
Well, thanks. So yeah, so if you would like to send us. The things, the areas that you're seeing that are an issue, we will be happy to put that on. We have a meeting uh next Wednesday.
Kathy, I want to make sure to put on record for a meeting. As uh, councilman, I've been to your events and you guys have done a terrific job.
Thank you.
Well, and, and I'm gonna bring up one more thing. Um. And, and an example, and I appreciate y'all listening to a discussion. So an example with. The Center Island and the lighting of that area. If that is something that we are not wanting to do like next year. Then I would hope that maybe we would give it a couple of years and just. Downsize it as things were out because there were residents who, I mean, we've got a twenty foot Christmas tree. Um, there's an inventory that we've built up that people have donated to. And as those things were out, we don't have to replace them. But like this past year, we spent like fifteen hundred dollars on commercial lights. Because they truly last longer than the ones we just run down and get them. So that's where. Having a plan because you definitely don't want someone to donate money for something and then. You're like, guess what? We're not gonna be using that anymore. And I wouldn't win.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Thank you. Thanks, Scott. All right. I thought it was gonna be quick, but I guess not.
Sarah.
Motion to return.
Oh, when, when did we cut? Did we pass a consent agenda?
Oh, yes. Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Excuse me.
Let me, let me read that. Go ahead. Motion to approve that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Before you approve, I'm sorry. Um, with the. The permission and approval from Mayor Protem and Council for under consent. Agenda letter D, the monthly financial report for budget for January twenty twenty three. I'm requesting if we could table that until the next meeting.
We're, we're, we're having a problem with our uh. Accounting software.
The new one or the?
No, the one they've had for twenty, thirty years, maybe even thirty five years.
Maybe.
And so it's very hard to get information out of it on a real time basis. And so she is uh trying to create that financial report for the next meeting. But we are meeting with the staff and everybody on a monthly basis to make sure that our budget is within, within uh.
Did you make a motion to approve?
I, so I need to uh include something um.
What she said to table it, so we, just D.
I make a motion to approve and we table uh monthly, the uh item D, monthly financial report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, consent agenda is approved, uh minus the financial report that was tabled for. Next council meeting in March twenty first, twenty twenty three. And uh.
I'd like to make a motion to. End this wonderful meeting for this beautiful community.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We come to an end at six forty nine.